I'm going to talk about spring break. R-9B? Ralph, Ralph, can we go?
Yes, sir. So, R-9B is discussed spring break 2018 requested by Commissioner Rosa Gonzalez.
Okay, let me begin. Commissioner Rosa Gonzalez, Commissioner Samuel, I think Commissioner Ariman. A lot of the commissioners reached out and asked this to be put on the agenda even though it's a different kind of meeting than we typically would handle something like this. I thought it was important to put on the agenda, and I credit them and thank them for raising the issue. We're in the middle of spring break right now, but what I'd like to do is, I want to say a couple of things. Then, I met with the chief.
This is my item. I'd like to introduce it after you speak, please.
Well, actually, I think about every commissioner asked me to do it. I think they just haven't put your name on it.
Oh, okay, all right. Then I'll follow your flow, but, I mean, I prepared that.
So, what I did is, I, so we would have an informed discussion on these issues. I asked the chief, I asked the manager, we had a meeting with some members of the community, some of our residents, just to try to inform our discussion. So, what I asked, actually, is in a moment, I'm going to ask the chief to sort of give us a rundown of what happened with what he needs, and I asked the manager also to talk a little bit about it so that when we discuss it, we have the advantage of what they saw. And, of course, we can talk about it any way we want. I do want to say one thing about it, though. I've only been mayor four months or so, and I will tell you that Saturday night was a very frightening thing, honestly. I'd spent, I'd been to Ocean and Collins a few times over the weekend, and I knew it was getting pretty bad. But Saturday night and over the weekend, it felt like we had really lost some control. And not just, it was really a tinder. And, you know, so when we talk about this, there'll be a lot of talk about balancing things. But at the end of the day, there's never, we're never going to balance public safety against something else. We just, we either can control and govern our streets, and control and govern our visitors, and keep them safe, and keep our residents safe. And if we can't, then we have to, we have to really think about it in other ways. And I, after three or four of you asked to put this on the agenda, I really asked the chief and the manager to look at what happened, to explain to us in detail what happened, and then so we could have a discussion. But I just wanted you to know that there is absolutely no way that this city can absorb that kind of party atmosphere, where people are just coming here to be, to have a block party infused with liquor, and, because once it comes to that capacity, I think what you're going to learn is, it's not a lot, it's very hard to enforce when you have 10,000 people on Ocean Drive. It's just, it becomes a real tinder. So, what I asked them to do was to talk about the situation in the moment that it happens, when we have to do something about it, but also in the longer term to address what we need to do beyond the high-capacity weekend ordinance that we've already passed. I mean, to me, everything ought to be on the table in these moments. We ought to be sending a message out that we don't want this kind of spring break or any kind of weekend like this. We ought to be sending that message out. But we also need to make sure that the toolkit is available, and everything should be on the table for the manager and the chief, whether it's rolling back hours of operation, whether it's rolling back liquor, whether it's closing off streets, whatever it is, I want to make sure we all agree that it is about the safety issue. And I asked them to address that because I think that's, these high-impact weekends are, I mean, look, are hard for us because, honestly, our virtues are our challenges. Everybody wants to be here, but not everybody can be here, and certainly people who come here in the way that we saw this weekend was just, it was, it felt like it was a fraternity party where anything goes, and that's really not who we are, and that's not who our city should be. So, I asked the chief to queue this up, and I asked the manager to queue it up, and then I'm going to let, ask you all to sort of talk about it. I don't want to have a public hearing today because we, we're not voting on anything. We're just talking about it. But I do want us to be informed, and then I want us to give some direction and give a sense of the commission to our administrators.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Each of the last four years, we have had an increasing number of people here come for spring break. It's a challenge to predict when the maximum crowds will be because spring break is varied across the country. We did know this particular week, there were 400 schools that were off the week leading up to this weekend, and another 160 schools across the country that were off beginning this weekend. So, we think it was a confluence of events that led to the really large crowd this particular weekend. In addition, it was St. Patrick's Day. We also had absolutely beautiful weather, and there have been efforts by other school, other areas in the country to limit the activity on spring break. So, why is, why have the crowds gotten larger every year? It's hard to say, but we ended up with the largest crowd in anyone's memory in the police department this particular weekend. Crowds began on Thursday. Friday was really challenging, and Saturday is when we were, we were really at maximum, to the point where around 8:45, we actually closed the MacArthur Causeway for an hour just because traffic wasn't moving anywhere in South Beach, and we felt it was a dangerous condition in terms of moving emergency vehicles around in South Beach. I do have, I do want to get, give the commission a sense of the size of the crowd, so I have some videos that I want to show. And I also want to show you some of the challenges our officers faced. So, this video is of 6:45 PM. Every year, the students choose to gather together. We try different configurations with barricades, barriers, and that, and that kind of thing to encourage them to spread out. That, if we can go back, is it possible to go back? Or freeze that? That particular visual, there actually was another pen to the north of that lifeguard station, which was our observation post, that's a retired lifeguard station, and we tried to encourage folks to go into the second pen, I mean, to the south of the lifeguard station. And we actually tried to, we did that by placing barricades. Well, folks climbed over the barricades. So, they want, wanted to be together. Our estimate is that crowd was 4,000 or 5,000 people. It was, if you stood on top of that lifeguard stand and looked down, very, very densely packed. So, they choose to be together, and they choose to go to that, that space every year. The next video, if we could go to that. Next video shows 8th Street and Ocean Drive at around 8:49 PM on Saturday. And really, from the middle block of the 700 block to the 1000 block, that's the kind of crowds and activity that you saw. The next one is of 9th Street around the same time. Okay, that's in front of Fat Tuesdays, and you can see the density of crowds. And by the way, behind the camera is Loomis Park, and there is not quite the same density, but quite a few people in the park as well. Okay? We also had a couple of moments, and what's very dangerous about this kind of size of crowd is that anything can spark something to happen. Now, we got through the weekend without anyone seriously injured. There was one injury to an officer. He's recovering. A bottle was thrown at him on the beach, and it struck him in the wrist. He blocked it with his, it was going towards his head, and he blocked it with his wrist. I'm happy to report that he is recovering. But other than that, we had no serious injuries, other than the usual things associated with excessive drinking and that kind of stuff. The next video is of one of the, I think there were a total of three stampedes on Saturday night, and that can happen when you have crowds like this and something happens. In this case, I believe a bottle was thrown, and people were spooked, and you'll see them start to run. And you can see how dangerous this is. Also, by the way, the crowds show the reason why we have to close the street. There are, as you know, for some number of years now, on high-impact weekends, when the crowds are too much, we need that space to accommodate the crowds, and there are a number of events during the year when we do that. This has become one of them. We started closing the street because of the size of crowds on certain spring break nights two years ago.
Chief, how many police did you have during this major?
At the height of this activity, around 8:00 PM, 8:00 to 10:00 PM, on Saturday night, we had 75 police officers working in the entertainment district. We also had police officers assigned elsewhere in the city to respond to calls for service. When things got as challenging as they did, beginning around 8:30, we did shift some of those to the entertainment district as well, and then we had our midnight shift come in at 10 o'clock, and that was an additional 23 officers.
So, there were 100?
So, we were at about, by 10 o'clock, 10:15, we had 100 officers in the entertainment district. And many of those, many of those cops had worked all day, and we kept them until very late at night because of the size of the crowds. The next video is, okay, this is, I'm going to show you four arrest scenarios to show you how challenging it is to make an arrest in these kinds of conditions. In this video, it's kind of hard to see, but at the top of the screen, you see the blue uniforms. What happened there is that in an effort to control behavior in the crowd, one of our officers asked someone to turn down a loudspeaker that he had, which we tried to do all evening. That, when he didn't, the officer took the speaker from him. The guy then followed the officer and tried to take the speaker back, and that resulted in an arrest. And with the significance, if we can go back to that, that frame and just show it? The significance of that is that the crowd starts to surge towards, I was in that group. There were about six of us officers there in the middle of that crowd, and the angry crowd begins to surge and taunt, and it was potentially a powder keg that could have gone south for us. I'm then, I'm now going to show you three arrests that occurred. These are captured on cell phones or body camera.
How many arrests were made that Saturday?
Saturday night, or through the weekend, we had 74 arrests, 39 felonies through the weekend. Now, that is on a pace similar to the last two Memorial Day weekends and some of our other busy holiday weekends, about the same number of arrests, the same kind of pace. Now, before I show you these videos, I want to tell you that real-life use of force by police officers is never pleasant to watch. But this is the real world in which our officers live, in this environment, if they have to make an arrest. So, the first case involves a 21-year-old young man from Michigan. He's riding and dancing atop the roof of a vehicle, the kind of behavior we want to discourage. In the end, he isn't properly discouraged, and the officers decide to make an arrest. This video ends up on Channel 10, and you can watch it, and it becomes a news story on Channel 10.
Damn! 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 Y'all buggin'!
Now, I bet you're all asking why the officer struck him three times. It's not a pleasant sight. The man has his hand buried underneath in his waistband. He's not, he's resisting arrest, and we're not going to let someone keep their hand in their waistband when we're making an arrest. In the end, that man was not injured, and in fact, if you followed the news story, the next day, in front of the cameras in front of one of the clubs, he actually finds the officer, apologizes to him, and takes a picture with him. Okay? But again, if we get to the point where we're making arrests in these kinds of crowds, those arrests are never pleasant to watch, and as you're deciding policy issues with regard to what the future is, if the future includes more enforcement, I want, I feel I have a responsibility to tell you what more enforcement looks like. The next video occurs at the Colony Hotel. This is again Saturday night. This is about 7:40, and this is a 26-year-old man who's intoxicated and doesn't want to pay his bill. Cops respond, do the usual thing, trying to control the circumstance, and it goes south, and they have to make an arrest. So, if we could run that.
Why are you here? Why are you here? Why are you doing that? 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 Why are you doing that?
Now, this happened indoors, not in front of one of the large crowds, okay? And the woman he was with was also arrested. The next one is the 14th, so earlier in the week. This is right outside Wet Willys, the 100 block of 8th Street, and this is another bill skip, where the person doesn't want to pay the bill, and we don't know it at the time, but he has a large bulge in his front pocket, and he is, has a significant amount of marijuana on him. So, this is a street encounter where an arrest is made in front of not even the size crowds that we had on Saturday night. This is earlier in the week, if we could show that.
How's my reading?
This is body camera footage.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on. Thank you, Mr. MacArthur. Look what the fuck they doing! They do nothing! That way, that way, that way. Oh, man. Keep walking.
So, Chief, what are the challenges when you're trying to make an arrest with that number of people?
If those kinds of efforts had taken place in front of those large crowds, either on the beach or on Ocean Drive on Saturday night, based on my experience and experience of other folks in this room, almost certainly, we would have had major problems with the crowd, and it could easily have gone south really fast, and we could have been brawling on Ocean Drive, police and folks who had come here to party. And that's the consideration and the balance when it comes to doing enforcement. We got through the weekend without anyone being injured. I'm extraordinarily proud of my, my officers who worked those long hours. Deputy Chief Clemens and I were out there with them. It was extremely difficult, and Saturday night was the toughest. And Captain Dosse, at a critical moment, recommended closing MacArthur for an hour, which we did, and it was exactly the right move. We didn't have enough cops to move the traffic off of Collins Avenue. We were able to do that eventually, and as soon as we did that, we reopened the MacArthur. So, it was an hour that it was closed. Essentially, the conditions on Saturday night were, we were oversaturated with people. And as I said, I think we struck the right balance of enforcement and crowd control and moving traffic to get, to get through the night.
Jimmy, you want to talk a little bit about, from your perspective, and then we'll sort of open it up?
Well, I know, Mayor, when we had the meeting in your office with some of the stakeholders, I think we were talking about the issue of, of capacity. Clearly, we don't want bad behavior, but one of the challenges, obviously, is, and I remember early on when I started at this job, we're talking about Memorial Day weekend. If you think of the city as a stadium, there's only so many people can fit into the stadium. In this case, we're an island, and there's only so many people, so many cars. And a lot of what we've done historically with Memorial Day weekend is how do we manage traffic and people? And I believe, I think we've all reached a conclusion that, based on not just Saturday nights, but even the crowds, probably Thursday and Friday as well, we're at that point where we need to begin to really approach this weekend, or this month, really. We're talking about a month of spring break, although I think the concentration is usually in, there's a two-week period where we identify more of a concentration. You know, how do we begin to address, going forward, the management of that capacity? And I think a couple of ideas that were put on the table in the discussions that I think we need to look at, in no particular order, although I think the next two are, the first two are, probably the first two. Number one, it's clear that we need to begin to message very proactively and aggressively, starting months before spring break, to prospective visitors, to the universities, to the people in the hospitality industry, et cetera, what our rules are. I think we've, one of the things we learned is that most people, really, don't have any idea that we don't allow drinking on the beach, et cetera, et cetera. And probably like committees, like cities like Panama City and others, who've been proactively now advertising their rules, to really educate folks about what we expect behavior to be here, what we won't tolerate, and that we're going to enforce those rules so that at least when they get here, they at least know what we're expecting and can't, can't feign ignorance. And included in that is education about keeping our streets clean, keeping our beaches clean, keeping our parks clean.
Jimmy, is the idea, could we, also, to let people know that this might not be a place they want to come, if, because of the rules we've imposed?
Yeah, part of, part of what we would be, and we'll get to that in a minute, part of what we would be communicating is, in fact, what would be the rules, and ultimately, that's a policy decision for you all, what would be the rules that govern during that period of whether it's the month of March, whether it's a two-week period, whether it's a six-week period? You know, what would be the rules? Not just the rules we currently have, like no drinking on the beach, you know, no coolers, but for example, you know, Panama City, one of the rules they adopted is, you know, all establishments close at 2:00 AM, no liquor sales beyond 2:00 AM. That's an example of the kind of rules, strict parking rules. So, whatever we ultimately decide is going to be the new spring break code, or the new more, you know, robust, high-impact code, we would need to very clearly advance it well in advance, so if they don't like those rules, they don't come. Go to other places where perhaps they don't have those rules. And I think the chief is right. Probably, the fact that some other communities have adopted rules like that have kept Miami Beach, maybe Miami Beach, perhaps, more attractive. Number two, and I concur with a lot of what's been said, we have to more aggressively enforce the rules, whatever they may ultimately be. Particularly, and this goes to the point of, I think, what the chief was saying, you know, by 7:00 at night, when you've got 10,000 people on Ocean Drive, it's too late. It's really earlier in the day, as folks are going out to the beach, making sure that we have not three or four checkpoints, but really checkpoints probably from 5th to 15th, where we're aggressively checking. I think, I've spoken to both chiefs, we probably need to go to Alfa Bravo staffing going forward during spring break, like with Memorial Day weekend, perhaps even look into whether, under mutual aid agreements, we can bring in some other departments to assist us. We've got to go to really peak staffing, probably also add the park rangers in, add more ambassadors, so that when people are coming in through that 10-block area, we can truly police liquor and anything else that they're trying to break in. As part of that, quite frankly, I would, under the high-impact rules, I think, of power we already have, I would severely limit what beachgoers can bring, probably towel only, so that there's no way. We know that college kids are very creative about how they hide their, their liquor, a bottle of water that's filled with vodka, things like that. So, we probably need to be very aggressive in just limiting to bringing a towel. We can work with our concessionaires to make sure that there's water and refreshments on the beach for sale, but to really restrict what they could bring in so that it makes it easier to truly do those checks. Traffic management is also a critical part of it. It's obviously been part of the success with Memorial Day weekend. I think we need to consider bringing in the traffic loop, because not only does that restrict the flow of traffic to Collins and Washington and prohibit entering the neighborhoods, but if you recall, it also eliminates all parking on Collins and Washington, removing parked cars from Ocean Drive, as we did when we closed, both on the east and west side, using DUI checkpoints and LPRs on our causeways. Part of the high-impact weekend rules we have is to raise parking rates in our garages, to, you know, to discourage folks from driving into Miami Beach. We can, and now with our new equipment, we can still keep the rates well for residents, but really discourage folks driving in. And, this has come forward in a lot of the discussion, the scooters and other motorized vehicles, two and three vehicle, vehicles have become a major problem. In Panama City, they prohibit overnight rental of those vehicles, and I know the law department's already working on legislation to how we can address, because they've become a real, real problem in managing traffic and even public safety. Those are some things we talked about. Obviously, early closure of liquor sales. Panama City has done it, some other cities have done it. I think we need to consider that. Perhaps, together with early closure, early enforcement of the noise ordinance, because what's clear is, and I know, you know, Amy May, who is my sort of liaison, we call her Ocean Amy, she talks to a lot of the kids out there. They don't come here for the clubs. They come here to hang out on the beach, to hang out on the street, that cabaret environment, and so we need to sort of kill that cabaret environment if that's how we're going to get them, not there. And, and probably not issue any special events permits, and be really strict with the promoters. You know, we saw one promotion called "Bad Behavior," where they were, a club encouraging bad behavior in the club, so we unfortunately, you know, we hate to send the message because there's a lot of good kids who come here and spend good money, but we really have to crack down on the bad behavior and send the message very strongly out, including to the promoters and operators. As part of that, you know, I, those are some ideas we throw out there as part of the discussion.
Okay. Commissioners, let's ask, these are our leaders, so why don't we ask them a little bit about some of the things they've raised? I appreciate you all queuing this up. Commissioner Rosen Gonzalez.
Okay. So, I see here that in terms of the arrests made between Friday, from Friday, March 16th through Sunday, March 18th, there were 74 arrests, 39 of those were felonies. How many of those were sexual assaults?
I, I don't have the breakdown. I, I didn't bring that. I don't know.
Heard that. It's, it's a very high number. Correct, if you don't know?
Well, there, there, I'm only aware of a handful of sexual assaults reported over the weekend. I just don't recall if there were any made any arrests, so I don't believe that was a high number.
Okay. The reason I put this item on the agenda is, and I, and I would like to read all of this into the record because it's, it was very frightening. On Saturday night at 9:05, all of us got an email, said all, "It's Saturday night at 8:56 PM, and we've just had the second human stampede of the night that totally disrupted our cafe tables and customers, people running away without paying checks. It is too dangerous and disruptive for sidewalk cafe staff and customers to keep the cafe tables open. We are closing the entire sidewalk cafe and taking the chairs away. If the danger subsides later in the evening, maybe we can reopen it." At 9:05, we got a second email. "I'm shutting down entire Cleveland, Cleveland operations at 10:00 PM. Staff are scared, and there are not enough city resources to handle the crowds in the But then I got the most disturbing one today, which was from a mom, and she said, "Hello, I've lived in Miami Beach for a long time. These last weeks, it has become dangerous, unpleasant, and almost impossible to avoid chaos and vulgarity in the streets. People gambling, using motorcycles like crazy, no police on the streets on Collins Avenue. Miami is such a beautiful city because of the residents, too. If these, these people decide to come and act like animals, at least the city should be on our side. I take my daughter to ballet four days a week. Traffic is terrible, so we have to, we have to walk, and I'm afraid that we're going to be run over or mugged. I called the police on Monday. A guy was driving in circles really fast at the intersection of Park Avenue and 22nd Street. At the corners, the Miami City Ballet. Behind the window, 20 little girls. What if the car flipped and crashed? The police never came." And she sent a video. You know, college students drinking, and I hate to say it, because I, I'm an advocate for, for the legalization of marijuana, but we're, it, when you, have you guys been out there to see spring break and what's happening? It's a very bizarre kind of phenomenon. It is 5,000 people who are corralled into one section on the beach, so they don't even really have the freedom to move around. And then there's, the city has a DJ that's playing this loud music, and then everybody, then there's just clouds of marijuana and drinking, which, and it's impossible to police. So, I would, and, and this report that you gave us said that right now, we're spending $1 million on spring break, and you put in the report, which I found interesting, you said, "Next year, the cost is going to increase significantly." Do you mean a doubling to $2 million, a tripling to $3 million? Like, how much would you suggest? Because if nobody saw police this time, what, what can we imagine, what can we expect for the future?
I, if, if we go to an Alfa Bravo staffing on two full weekends during spring break, the costs will leap considerably. The Alfa Bravo staffing for Memorial Day alone is $1 million.
Could I ask, although, it's not a public hearing, Bobby, you're, could you, he may want to comment on what you just said?
Wait, I just, what, what I'd like to, to say is, if that's $1 million, a million per day? A million for the entire Memorial Day weekend, but we have like three or four, so now we're talking $3 or $4 million in cost.
The, the police department budget for Memorial Day is approximately $1 million for the four days. That includes overtime, equipment, and related.
Bobby Jenkins, president of the FOP from Miami Beach. I'd like to address Ms. Gonzalez. You didn't see them on Collins Avenue because they were all on Ocean Drive. There were, there were no more other officers to go. When officers started needing help, that's where they go, where the help is needed. So, for you to say there were no cops on the beach is a bad and wrong thing to say.
I didn't. I just read an email, I read an email from somebody else that we all received, and I don't think anybody's pointing fingers here. I think we're trying to find a solution.
There wasn't enough cops.
And what, okay, there weren't enough cops.
No, there wasn't.
Okay, so, we now know that, but, so then, I would, I would draft up, like, a high-impact plan. I would have somebody come. I would, I would actually advocate for a third party to come in and look at this scenario and find out, figure out what we need to do to control it.
And make another comment?
Because we had this conversation last year, right after spring break. We've already had this conversation, and it didn't work. Whatever we did, it's become worse this year. I heard that of the 39 felonies, we can't confirm this, many of them were sexual assaults. It's unacceptable.
Commissioner, I want to correct that that is not accurate. I'm aware of every sexual assault that was reported this weekend, and it was a handful. I just don't know how many arrests were made in, so, I can, I can get you that information.
Okay, if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. I would take every single action that you possibly can to, to, to do whatever Fort Lauderdale did. Fort Lauderdale didn't want spring break. Was it Panama City? They shut it down. If you have to shut down everything for two whole weeks... If you have to shut down everything for two whole weeks, so that we don't, no longer host spring break, and we lose that $5 to $7 million in revenue, that's what we're going to end up spending in cost anyway. You know, we just, you know, it just doesn't, I mean, it's unsafe.
Before I go to Commissioner Samson, Bobby, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I did say, the first start, what you need to start with first, let us go out and do zero enforcement. People violate the law, let us do our job and enforce it. Number two is, you need to get rid of the marijuana, people think it's a free zone and they come and do it. We do not have enough officers to affect it. You cannot deal with people that are impaired, and that's what these people, everybody, I mean, even people that don't want to be impaired are impaired.
I think we sent, I think we sent a message to the world, like, you can come to Miami Beach and get away with everything, and we're not going to, you know, there's going to be no consequence, or very little consequence. And I think that's why we have now become this partying, spring break mecca. I believe that we need to reverse, we, reverse the marijuana legislation. Because what we have right now are drugs being sold on every street corner, okay? Children being offered drugs, it's wafting through the air, and it's sending a message that you can come here and do whatever you want, so if we need to tighten this up. And it's very unpopular for a politician to say, 80% of the city of Miami Beach electorate voted in favor of medical marijuana. We are a city of residents who smoke marijuana, but you can't do it in the MXC. I don't know what to say. Maybe you can't do it on the beach, you can't do it in the MXC. If you are smoking marijuana, you are a resident of the city of Miami Beach, then we're not going to arrest you, but I don't know how to do this to make it legal. We need to have a tool to control this, because it's not safe even, it's not safe even for the kids who are there, okay? Because we know that it's going to end poorly. Human stampedes are not okay.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Samson, I just want to remind everybody, Jimmy gave us a list of things, and the idea here is, I hope, what we would be doing as we go through this, we're not voting on anything now, I just wanted you all to have the opportunity to hear from your leaders as they sort of develop an approach that I think we're going to hear from again, so Commissioner Samson, you're up.
Yeah. Thank you. Mayor, I had the opportunity, like a number of my colleagues, to talk with the folks involved, actually see it firsthand on Sunday, and like others, you know, I share the grave concerns of what we're dealing with. I mean, this was not good, and it was not good for anyone. It's not good for our residents, we've had an outpouring from our residents. It wasn't good for our businesses. Perhaps one of the moments really struck me is when I saw our businesses weren't doing well in this environment. Clearly, we taxed our city staff, and frankly, even for the guests who maybe thought they were having a good time, they were in a dangerous situation. My headline is, we were darn lucky that we're all sitting here having this conversation with the limited sort of impact given what we had, we're lucky. And I too want to echo the thank you to our police for what they did so that we at least got through it. Now, where are we and where do we go? It's both long-term and short-term, is I think the way we need to think about it. In terms of the long-term, I think we need to get ahead of the planning curve. I think it's fair to say, given where we're at, that we need to do a better job in our upfront planning. I think all options have to be on the table. I think some of the ideas, many of the ideas directionally that our chief and the city manager put on the table are correct. Messaging upfront, enforcement, hours, all those things, towel only on the beach, these sound like the right policy ideas, including the scooters, but this is no simple undertaking. And just looking at some of the videos, which I think were very helpful, we're in a little bit of a high-wire moment as we look forward, so we probably should start that planning ASAP. And I would not be opposed, and I think the idea of bringing in some outside thinking on this, just to make sure we're getting the best story and the best approach, you know, might make sense just because of the risks involved if we make mistakes. And also making sure we got facts, you know, I hear a lot about the Fort Lauderdale story, and did some research on that as well, but they had a ton of people out there, too, and some of their headlines frankly showed some of the things we're dealing with. So it's not like there's a silver bullet out there that we can just latch out to. So from a long-term standpoint, we need very disciplined, comprehensive planning, we should start that with a cross-department team. I think we, as a body, need to engage on this, and I am open to the outside resources to make it better. I do want to close my thoughts with the short-term. I think we're probably over the hump, but we were surprised on Saturday, and with that, I guess with the couple of weeks left, I would look to the manager and our police chief, is there anything we need to do now? Do you need incremental resources? Is there anything from a safeguard, whether it's overtime, bringing another entities to make sure we finish out strong?
We've added extra officers for this weekend. This is a different kind of weekend based on past experience, I think even the operators who are here will tell you that. We have a lot of demands this weekend associated with the Miami Music Festival. We have an extra 35 or so officers who are working at various venues in some of our major hotels that have Miami Music Festival events. Traditionally, we have not had problems at those events because we have officers there, and we don't have the volume this week, that we've had virtually no volume this week on the beach. So, so far, we're in a good place. Tomorrow, we're told, is like senior skip day or something, and we may have a lot of kids on the beach, but we have the staffing, we believe, for that. And again, if we get, once we get through this weekend, spring break begins to peter off, and we have one more week. Now, next week, we do have the Miami date, schools are off. So there remain some challenges, but we think we're over the hump, and we have, we think, adequate staffing between now and the end of the spring break season.
Great. My last thought, then, sounds, and I'm pleased to hear, we think we've got the resources and the plans for spring break, probably wouldn't be a bad idea to pressure-test our plans for Memorial Day. I know there was some good thinking and work that went into it. Given what we just experienced, I think we should dust them off a little bit and make sure that we have everything we need. We're in the business up here of resources and policies, so I for one, I think my colleagues would be supportive. If you need something to make sure that we're as best positioned, I think we should have that conversation sooner rather than later.
Okay, Commissioner Alamon.
It's a short list, it's not a long.
Whenever she gets her list going, I know things will happen.
You know, I've lived in Miami Beach for 24 years, and this is, in my memory, I would call it the worst spring break. What I mean by that is, is just the volumes of people. And as the chief said, most of the people that were here were just, you know, not doing anything wrong and having a good time, and that's great. But the problem is when you have so many people in one place, one confined place, if something goes wrong, it can turn out disastrous. And I do, I do agree with my colleague that, you know, we were lucky, that nothing happened worse than it did, and, you know, some fairly decently bad things happened. I think this might have been exacerbated by Hurricane Irma. We know that beautiful places like Puerto Rico and Cancun are closed for business, and perhaps, you know, we were the next up tropical destination. Also, you know, the weather's perfect, the beaches are beautiful, we are popular. I was, happened to be looking over our community satisfaction survey today, and one of the questions on there was about whether residents perceive themselves to be safe. And by and large, they do, except on special events. 20% of our residents don't feel safe during special events. And I think we need to take note of that, because that's a broader issue than just spring break. Chief, I wanted to ask you, first of all, since you mentioned Memorial Day, I am concerned, I remain concerned about those 12 special event permits that we talked about for Memorial Day. I'm not sure we should have those at all, so perhaps we need to talk about that at the next commission meeting. Chief, crowd control. Clearly, we got a very thorough memo, and I know we're going to look at all of these things and benefit from the conversation we had today. A couple of things that were not mentioned, when you think about those crowd brawls, and what are you going to do if there is one? Because it looked to me from the videos that that could easily happen. Does every unit have the large pepper spray canisters? And should they, if they don't, can we go get those for you? And secondly, do we do training for crowd brawls, so that our Miami Beach policemen and women, you know, are, feel that they can, they know what to do in that situation, and know how to come together in a crowd brawl situation?
Good evening, Reclamas Deputy Chief. We are currently evaluating our field force team, we're putting together a component, if you will. We do have a field force conics that has equipment in there. As far as what chemical agents that we have in order to be able to deal with a volatile crowd, we're going ahead and we're making that assessment as to whether or not we're fully prepared for that. We have other components, we have pepperball guns, but most of the time with field force units, you're talking about formations, and you're talking about tactics. You know, the last thing you want to do is use a chemical agent to try to disperse a crowd, you know, by sheer numbers alone is what you're looking to do if you need to move people. We currently have shields and things like that that are in place, that in the event, in fact, for Memorial Day, for Memorial Day weekend, every year, we go ahead and we outfit a trailer, so that if we need to go ahead and move it to a particular location, it's readily available to do so.
You know, I'm deeply culturally concerned by the level of disrespect that I consistently see on all of these videos. I don't, I can't believe what a good job our Miami Beach police officers do of tolerating that level of disrespect and staying professional and doing their jobs, so I want to commend each and every one of them for that.
I'd like, I think there was only, there was only one injury, really, and that was Officer Andy Descalzo over the weekend. And, I mean, I know I talk to you pretty regularly about it, I can tell you what, I mean, I have a background, I did a lot of police practice work as a prosecutor and other jobs. It's so hard, it's a tinder, and every decision that's made can light it, and we weren't just lucky. Honestly, I think you all were put in a situation, once you have that capacity problem, there are very few good options. You really have just got to figure out how to navigate that, and I want to thank you all for not, this could have been so much worse than it was, although I think obviously we should use this moment to figure out how to not have this situation again, because we just, I don't think we can tolerate it. Are you finished? Commissioner, I'll get back to everybody, I'm going to go to Commissioner Gangor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioner Rosen Gonzalez, for adding this to the agenda, it's very timely. I don't want to repeat, because I obviously share many of the thoughts that my colleagues have already expressed, but there needs to be a solution to this. We aren't the first city that has had to deal with the growing spring break problem and had to make it go away. Fort Lauderdale, to use by example, obviously, is one close neighbor that was able to successfully get their spring break under control. If it's more police that we need, then let's do it. If we don't have enough police in Miami Beach, I think we have MOUs with every other local agency in town, as we've had to do before over Memorial Day weekend, to send reinforcements. And if we need them in these critical times, we should be doing it. With regard to the problems of the bad behavior on Ocean Drive, we need to get these small crimes under control, just like people can't drink, I wasn't on the commission, but people shouldn't be able to go around blowing marijuana in people's faces down Ocean Drive. And from what I'm hearing and what I'm smelling when I'm walking down Ocean Drive, that is exactly what's happening. So if we've given some instruction from a previous commission to allow that, then that is wrong, and we need to reverse course. Because I think it's all these little crimes people get away with, they feel cool drinking on the street, they feel cool smoking on the street, they'll feel cool fighting on the street, and getting into all sorts of other crimes. So I think we need to be pretty vigilant in making sure that we are going after the small crimes. Earlier today, in Neighborhoods Committee, we talked about bringing back a recommendation about an outside study or an outside consultant. So obviously, I agree with that, I voted for that at Neighborhoods, and if that's something that we need to do to control this weekend, then I would support that again. And then the last thing I would ask the administration, whether it be the manager or the police chief, is to not overburden or tax the commission with micromanaging and coming up with the specific solutions. We are the legislative body, we set policy. It's not for us to really tell you how to run the city or tell you how to police. It's for you all to come to us with a detailed list of suggestions in our commission agendas, you all that work for the city, that have the jobs, not the elected part-timers, to tell us what you need from us, whether it's money, whether it's resources, whether it's votes, and for us to do that. So we can't be put in the position that it's the commission micromanaging these items. We need for you all to tell us what we need to keep our city safe, and I know we will do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Alamon, I mean, Commissioner Ariola.
Yeah, I don't want to just repeat everything, you know, that was said, so when I look at the spring break phenomenon on Miami Beach, and I've been here a really long time, and I've seen it evolve, and I was not here this weekend, although I've seen all the videos and pictures, and to me, it seemed like the biggest crowds for spring break that I've ever seen, and I think everybody here attests to that. And I scratched my head, and like, why is this happening? Because Miami Beach, to me, has to be among the most boring places to come for spring break. It really does. I mean, we're all about the same age, and I remember going to Cancun and all these places when I was in college, and there was a reason you would go there, because they'd have an 18-year-old drinking limit, cheap drink prices, cheap hotels, cheap flights, events, concerts. We have none of that. I mean, we don't allow drinking on the beach, you look at these videos, nobody's even drinking in the streets. I mean, I think we do a fairly good job of that, we don't have concerts, we have no promotions, room rates are expensive, so I don't get it. And that's a mystery to me, it's like, why are these people coming here? You know, and marijuana is now the substitute for drinking, we should look at that. But I don't quite understand what is so attractive for the spring break crowd, and I do think we got to try to understand the bottom of it, and, well, but, something that Commissioner Alamon said, the city manager and I spoke about it, I do think maybe this year, you know, we did have the events of Irma shutting down other spring break destinations, and the fact that Panama City, and long ago, Fort Lauderdale, and even Daytona Beach have clamped down on spring break activities, and maybe that's what's pushing all these folks here. But for solutions, I think we've listed a whole bunch of really good ones. You know, we should look at our marijuana policy, and I think there's, you know, there was some wisdom in why we did that, but we might have to revisit it. And, you know, zero tolerance policy towards certain behaviors, the scooter rentals, which create another problem but needs to be addressed. Making sure that the 21 drinking limit is actually enforced in all the clubs. We didn't talk about that, but to the extent that some clubs are being lax on that, and we're not enforcing policy there, I think we should be very draconian on clubs that promote. I saw some clubs promote males 21, females 18. I think we need to close those loopholes, the parking rates, jack those up to discourage people from driving, close Ocean Drive, more police, including police from maybe outside of Miami Beach if we need the extra manpower. I know the license plate readers bore fruit this past spring break. A marketing campaign as to, you know, what the do's and don'ts will be during spring break, the behaviors that won't be tolerated. You know, survey of college students, why are they coming here? What is it that they find attractive about Miami Beach? We may not be aware of why they're here. And then, policy-wise, we just have to decide, do we want spring break or not? And that's a policy decision. We don't want it, we can implement a lot of policies that are very draconian in nature to drive it away. If we want it, up to what point are we going to tolerate certain things? I mean, this is a very healthy discussion, but we got to get this fixed between now and, you know, next year.
Commissioner.
I'll just say, yeah, I mean, at this point, everybody's pretty much said everything, but we were understaffed, as you know. I don't know if we can look back at the special event response team that we used to have, something to look at, explore, but we have ordinances. We have lots of ordinances that deal with promoters, that deal with the beach, that deal with so much. We need enforcement of the ordinance we have on the books. Illegal is still illegal, and we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can whereby everybody is safe and having a good time, but the rules are enforced and the laws are enforced.
Okay, I have a question for the chief and for the manager. And first of all, thank you all for the discussion. Jimmy, you gave us about 10 items, it seemed like, that you thought we should think about. Not all of them require even legislation or ordinances, and I know some more ideas have come as we've been talking here. So I just want to make sure, what we're going to do is we're going to implement some, and one of the things, my question now is, we do have high-impact weekend rules, we have an ordinance that was, that was put in place, and my question is, if we need to change that in some way, and if we do, I'd like you guys to work with our city attorney, because for instance, one of the thoughts I had, if we do want to send out a message that, that certain behavior's just not going to be here, we ought to, we ought to make sure you have that ability, or you, chief, to do that.
Can I suggest something?
Can I just finish? Can I just finish, and I'll call on you? So one of the things you might want to consider is, and maybe we'd like to see it, is whether there are some additional powers you need for a short-term issue, like we had over the weekend, or a longer term. So for instance, maybe six months or two or three months out, when you see there's a confluence of events like you saw, you might be able to say, in anticipation of this event, we are going to roll back certain cafe hours or alcohol sales. Not necessarily in across-the-board, because I think that might be draconian, and we're not sure who it would be touching, but maybe give the manager that ability so that we can at least do the messaging that some of my colleagues have talked about. And I don't know whether you, whether you need additional powers to do that, but I feel like if you all, your, our staff leaders with the city attorney could come up with some ideas, that might be something we'd want to do so that you have the ability to send that, project out to the community that's coming here. Maybe this, if you're coming here for a bad purpose, this isn't, or whatever purpose this isn't, and I'm going to get you, I just want to.
As you know, we're already in discussions with the city attorney's office on some ordinance issues, whether it's scooters, whether it's hours of sale, et cetera. So we're looking at, we do have a high-impact ordinance, we think we want to make it tougher, you know, beef it up. But we're looking at those issues as well. There are some things that are just a question of staffing, budgeting, and obviously, and as we get to the budgeting cycle, we'll address some of those as well. So it's a combination. There are some things we don't need any direction or to wait on, but other things may need some legislative changes, and we'll, we'll come back with those as well. And we'll present to you just an overall package to give you a sense of what, you know, we're looking to do going forward.
Commissioner Rosen Gonzalez.
Okay, I have an idea. We had the, we were hosting the DJ booth, right, with party music. Yes? But we decided that that was a bad idea. But we can break up a party. You know how? We can play the most un-party-friendly music that you could possibly think of, like the John de Souza march, Habanagila, I don't care what we're going to play. I would play it, I would blast it, I would disperse the crowd, and I think you will see that spring break will go away. And I think that this is a solution. It's not going to cost us any money. We already have the equipment there. Nobody, none of these kids will drown out whatever music they have, and I don't know, what, what do kids hate, what do kids dislike the most? Let's figure out the music that they're most going to dislike and blast it, and say, you know what, guys, we don't want to host the party anymore, and that's it. And I think that that will solve the problem for the rest of this year. We already have it set up. We can make sure that, you know, as they come in, and I just, because I, you know, if it's unsafe, it's unsafe, it's unsafe for everyone. It's unsafe for the kids, it's unsafe for the cops, it's unsafe for the businesses, it's unsafe for the children that are walking to ballet school. So if we're going to break up the party, I think we should break it up. You know, we can't just turn off the music. I think we should do something radical. Because all of this, because we were here last year. We, this is, I feel like it's, it's Groundhog Day. We've, we've been here, we've done this, we have a high-impact ordinance, it didn't work. The only thing that we can possibly do is, number one, outsource some sort of expert to come in and tell us what we need to do to break up spring break, or we can music everybody out.
Commissioner Ariola, if, if you mentioned Pat Boone Love Letters in the Sand, I may start singing. Go ahead.
Commissioner Rosen Gonzalez asked a very provocative question, which is, you know, what do we do to, you know, make this uncool to kid, for kids? Invite their parents for spring break. They'll never come back. But in all seriousness, it's a good question. It's a provocative question, and I would like to know, why are they coming here? I mean, I know why people went to Panama City, Daytona Beach, Cancun, you know, it's price, availability of drinks for cheap, the parties on the beach. We have none of that. I do not know why they're coming, other than, you know, this is the way they like to hang out, which is hang out in the street, listen to music, and possibly smoke pot. That's about all the activity that I see going on. There's nothing going on in Miami Beach that would warrant this many spring breakers.
Yep.
What do you think of piping Mozart on the beach?
Commissioner Samuel, and then Commissioner Alamon.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I'm nothing, I'm at least consistent, so I'm going to come back to short-term and long-term. In the short-term, I would like the city administration to review its plans for Memorial Day, highlight any potential risk, and come back to us with anything you would need from us. So I think that's important, that we do that checkpoint. In the long-term, I agree that we will need a package, a sort of set of plans and ordinance, but I do think we, as a body upfront, probably need to give some direction as to where we're trying to go. It'd be, I don't think it would be fair to direct the staff to put together a plan if we're not sure what game we're playing. And there are different variations of the game. So I think the step before the comprehensive package with the ordinance, the budget, is what are the sort of strategic policy questions you need from us? Could involve, resources could involve the degree to which we want to engage in spring break and how we want to do it, and tee those up. And I think I'm going to come back and include in this notion here, and I can formalize it a motion if, if you'd like. I do believe, given the seriousness of what we just dealt with, we should bring in outside resources. At the minimum, it's a little extra expense, but I think getting the best thinking we can, so we're not here 12 months from now talking about this, is appropriate. So in a nutshell, a review of the Memorial Day plan, and that we get to review the output of that review, a generation of the critical policy questions that need to be addressed in advance of the development of the plan for 2019, and the consideration of bringing in outside expertise vis-à-vis the research on why people are coming, what we can do about that, whether it's on the enforcement side, that we have the best thinking possible. That would be where I'd like to go from here.
Commissioner Alamon.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think Commissioner Ariola raised a good point, and perhaps our communications team, Jimmy, can do a survey. Let's go, you know, is there a way that we could get out there maybe earlier in the day and just talk to some of these students and learn empirically why they're here, so that we can make sure that the actions that we're taking from a discouragement of these very, very large populations of students coming. When we say messaging, that sounds very vague. I would like to see us communicate directly with the universities about what our rules are and what they should expect, and make a request of the university presidents to disseminate that information, whether it's, you know, through the Greek life liaisons, however they can get to their students, enlist their support in doing that. And part of that message ought to be, we won't tolerate alcohol and drug use, you know, public drinking, public smoking of marijuana, we're not going to tolerate it. I get that once there are already 10,000 kids on Ocean Drive, that is not probably the time when you have 100 officers to start trying to do that. But I absolutely do believe that we should be doing it early during the day for as long as the command staff believes that doing so is safe and a proper course of action. You'll know when the temperature has shifted and it's no longer time to do that. But to the extent that we can be doing that early, that message will go home with those kids.
Okay. So we've had a lot to say today. I think, first of all, in terms of an outside consultant, or just whatever help you want, Jimmy, you have the authority, since it wouldn't be more than $50,000 to go into it, so I assume you're going to do it. And, and by the way, just so you know, I think that's going to be very helpful, because frankly, there are a lot of other communities that have these issues, and, and it probably happens already, because I'm pretty certain most of these guys have officer friends from other districts where they have similar issues, and they've talked, and obviously, the chief comes, spends some time in New York, which is not, you know, which has some experience in high-impact weekends. Really, what I wanted to do was give these folks, all of our, our professional staff, sort of what we're looking to do. And we, we haven't answered Commissioner Ariola's statement, is like, well, do we want spring break or not? I think what we, what we're very sure we want is to not have a spring break like we're having. I think we're, it's absolutely certain that this commission does not want people coming here to simply hang around in throngs, drinking and deciding that they're going to do here what they wouldn't do where they come from. And, but we can't get in this position again where on a Saturday night, you're powerless, because if you try to enforce the law, you're going to create a much different and probably more perilous and dangerous situation. So by the way, I commend very, very difficult decisions and judgment, and your officers, I think, I don't think it was simply luck that we survived that weekend. Let's just not have that weekend again. So Jimmy, I think you should have a good sense of this, and Raul's been listening as well. So will you guys come back to us pretty quickly? Maybe you can circulate an LTC with a lot of the ideas. You've, I know you already got a list in your head, and you've said it before, but take what we've said and get it back to us. And one of the, and the thing I just threw out there, I want to make sure, is that I really do feel like you ought to have the ability to say, I know that in, there's going to be two weekends in, in March next year, that I want to make sure people who are sending out these flyers know that they're not going to be up after a certain time, or there's not going to be, or the street's not going to be open, or they're going to have to have, they're going to have to have only blankets and no liquid. I mean, whatever it is to send out a message that we really, this is not who we are, who we want, and we're going to make sure it's not. And so I thank you all for the, for everything we've done. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, because Bobby, I.
No, this is not a negative thing, this is a positive.
I didn't ask first.
I know, I appreciate everybody's comments, because our, the reason our guys do what they do, guys and girls, is because that's, we're very good at it. The Department of Justice uses us for an example to other agencies since Memorial Days. So we know how to deal with people, we know how to be abused 24/7, we're used to that. That's just a reality. If you're going to have a committee, I would ask that the union be part of it, because it's the rank and file, it has to do it.
Yeah, and I'm not sure we're creating a committee, but by the way, I think you should know, you're always welcome here, you can talk to me and any of us anytime you want.
That's a, that's a new theme, I understand.
No, but, but it's, it's a real one, because, look, none of us are real experts in this, you all are, and we rely on you to inform us, and we make policy decisions, basically, so that's how we'll do it. So thank you all for coming.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I know I'm driving you nuts here, but, but you know who wasn't here that I didn't hear from today was the Hotel and Visitor Association, and I'm just wondering, in terms of our immediate communication of what the rules are here and what our visitors should expect, perhaps we could partner with them? They have the emails for everyone who's coming here over the next three weeks. Maybe they would partner with us to send a City of Miami Beach message to our incoming visitors.
Okay. That's a great, that was a great recommendation. Thank you all, meetings adjourned.